Good afternoon. The seventy-third term, the seventy-third meeting of the seven, the fifty-third meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City is now called to order. I would ask everyone who is in attendance tonight to ensure that your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum on silent. Please, if you are here with us, please wear a mask at this time. If you don't have one, someone will bring one for you. This body has been fully vaccinated as well as boosted. At this time, we're going to go into our invocation. It will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Kevin Slaton of the Northwood Apphold United Methodist Church. At this time, it's your fourth.
Let's pray. Loving and gracious God, we come here today with the scent of the world upon us. We reek of its self-serving and perverted romance with greed. I pray you would clean us up, starting on the inside first. Remove the tent from our eyelids, that we may see the hearts and not just see the skin behind the poverty and crime that envelops our communities. Open our eyes so that your divine wisdom might compel the leading hearts of this council to better understand and know that we can only effectively administer equitable justice to the masses if we are showing in the legislative chambers an approach toward governing that is free from slavery to big donors and well-financed lobby interest. We can only challenge material wealth and worldly destruction if our policies display that we are humbly freed from its clutches ourselves. And we can only truly reject classism if we live recognizing that there is no hierarchy amongst people. In this high and holy season for both Muslims and Christians alike, grant us the wisdom, courage, and strength to live as a resurrected and peace-seeking people, not conformed to the realities of this world but determined to transform it as agents of your justice, healing, and love. Pray that on this day, the graves of slaves and former slave owners will shift the foundations of justice and settle on the pillars of forgiveness and equity. And so we come, oh God, lifting our voices in unison as we march to the steady beat of hope. Today, our collective prayer is that the hopes being developed in downtown can also be conceived in uptown, that our plans below Eastern Avenue reflect the reciprocating equity of our plans proposed for North and Pennsylvania Avenue. Now, God, I ask that you would forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. On this night, on this day, I lift the names of Nick, Ryan, James, Sharon, Mark, Yitzie, Christopher, Danielle, Zeke, John, Eric, Antonio, Odette, and Robert. My prayer is simply that their policies would comfort the disturbed while disturbing the comfortable. Their discourse would rise to a level of justice-seeking equity for all of its citizens. I pray their paths might forever be littered with the residue of lowered expectations that cling to so many whom this city they serve. May it cling to the hymns of their own political journeys as a reminder that the sacrifice is worth it. Inscribe upon their lips and their hearts the pain and suffering of their constituents in such a way that the work they've done might never leave a bad taste in their mouths nor in those of futures yet unborn. May they constantly be reminded that there is a God who watches over us all, and one day when the saints all get together, there'll be a great reckoning, and the first will be the last, and the last will be the first. We anchor these prayerful thoughts grounded in the awe of creation and a mystery that tells us there is more that binds us than separates us. So we each pray as we've been taught to in our own respective faith traditions. I pray as one anchored in Christ and his view of the world through peace and love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Dr. Kevin Slaton. We'd also like to thank Councilmember Ryan Dorsey for inviting you here tonight. I ask everyone to stand and state the pledge of allegiance with me.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Reverend Dr. Slaton. At this time, we have a, our showcase, at this, we have Ms. Veronica Jackson, the Executive Director of Pivot Baltimore. Pivot brings together employers, service providers, government agencies, nonprofits, faith-based groups, and community members at large to change the perceptions and reduce the stigma and incarceration that follows women for a lifetime. Ms. Jackson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me tonight. Pivot is a non-week women's reentry program, and we service women who have any criminal justice background. So whether a woman is newly released, a woman has a pending charge, or a woman is anticipating coming home from prison, we begin working with that woman immediately to ensure that that woman receives personal success coaching, wellness, mental health, in addition to workforce development. What we do know at Pivot and all the work that we do is that we all have done some things that we might need a second chance for, but we also know that people are more successful in our city when there is a successful reentry plan in place. And we aim to always be a gender-specific program that helps women to reach their goals. We help women not only ensure that they get housing, or they get employment, or the things that matter, we make sure that the women are also able to maintain it. Because one thing about employment, you can get a job, but if you are taking you everywhere you go, you have to deal with you as an individual and some of the decisions you've made and some of the things that led you there so that you're not making those same mistakes again in the future. So, we are located at 901 North Milton Avenue 21205 here in Baltimore City. And if you or anyone that you may know knows a woman who is in need of services or any type of assistance, please feel free to contact us. We have an amazing recidivism rate of five percent, which is major in a city of ours, and we have so many success stories, and we just want more women to know that we are here. Our next major event, we have a prom coming up for many of our ladies, so if you didn't have an opportunity to attend prom, or you would like to sponsor a lady to be able to ensure that she's able to partake in a prom, please contact us immediately.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. We truly appreciate it. Do you have a website, a phone number, email address?
I do. So our website is www.info@pivotprogram.org. Our phone number is 443-306-3964, and you can always hit us up on Pivot Be More on IG or Facebook.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. We truly appreciate it. At this time, we have some special young folks as well as older folks to recognize for their amazing accomplishments and continually putting Baltimore City on the map. You know, coming out of COVID, sports was a challenge in our city, particularly for our student athletes, and what we understand and know is Baltimore City basketball is alive and well and doing strong in the state. So at this time, I would like to call up Forest Park High School Basketball Women's Team. Are they here? Anyone representing Forest Park, please come up. You can store. Come, come all the way up. They're going to come up. Bring them up. These are, they were the semifinalists for the 1A MPSSAA. This is Principal Muzun and Coach Dunn, and two players, what's your name?
Aaliyah.
Aaliyah.
And Shanaiah.
And Shanaiah, come on up. Come on up. So we'll come take a picture. Madam Vice President, you want, would you like to get in the picture? You guys going to hold it? Come on, scoot over. And you could hold this. Chairman Schleifer, if you could come up. So members, if one of your high schools are called, it's, if it's in your district, please come up to take a picture. Thank you. Clap it up for them.
Congratulations.
All right, so when we clapping up for our young folks, let's act like the Ravens just won the Super Bowl and clap it up for Baltimore City Student Athletes. Next up, we have the famous, the well-respected Coach Herman Tree Herrett and the Lake Clifton Basketball Team. If you guys could come on up. So Coach Tree, he's, he's been down to, he's a poet, we know that. Come on, come on up. Yeah, come on up. Coach Tree, he's been down to state championship, uh, state championship game fourteen times? Is that right?
Fourteen for the finals.
Fourteen for the finals, and he's currently a finalist for the Wooden Award.
The John Wooden.
The John Wooden Award for high school basketball coach. So, again, that's why I said the famous. You want to get on the other side?
I'm going to stand up here.
So Lake Clifton had an amazing run. They did not, uh, let the coach over here.
Okay.
They were unsuccessful in the finals. These young men carried Baltimore and Lake Clifton's tradition of basketball down at College Park really well, and we want to congratulate them.
Good job.
Oh, please take the mask off. Yep, well, some of them. Next up, we have the 1A MPSSAA Champions of the State of Maryland, and that's Emerson Westside High School Basketball Team. Come on up. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the coach, the coach and the captains to join me on the dais, as well as Councilman Burnett. The other teams could stand right behind, in front of here. Shaleek, they can stand right here. Can they stand behind these shifts? Yeah.
We're captains, that coach. We're coming up with you. Come on.
He's two.
Get on the other side, bro.
And I get a little left.
You got it?
Thank you, sir.
You want to hold it?
Yes, sir.
All right. There you go.
You got to hold it up.
You stand up. You can stand up right with me. Come on. Come on, coach. Perfect. Give, give it up for Emerson Westside. Who's going to? Next up, we have some young men from the Alameda. We're calling up Baltimore City College Basketball Team for winning the 2023 3A MPSSAA Men's Basketball Championship, joined by Coach Omar Smith and Warren Smith. Oh, you get to come up twice. You got, the basketball, and then we got. So Warren's not going to tell you the truth, but in 1996, he was out of bounds. You guys have no idea what I'm talking about, but City beat Poly in a late touchdown, and this guy caught it supposedly, was the second-to-last high school game at Memorial Stadium.
I tell everybody that story. Yeah, we should show it. Let's, let's get the tape. Come on, stand up.
I'm glad y'all didn't sing that song. And last, but certainly not least, the Baltimore Poly Technic Institute, the 3A State Semifinalist of the 2023 MPSSAA Women's Basketball Tournament, led by the famous Coach K. I don't think she likes when I call her that, but I do, and Director Williams. We also have a former Poly Women's Basketball Player on the council, and that's Chairwoman Dani McCray. Come on up. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You was going to get in there too? You didn't play.
I ain't getting in. I told her though.
I hear you. All right, give it one last round of applause for our amazing student athletes. Thank you all for joining us. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
We will now proceed to adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the March 13, 2023 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two. Before we get into bills, introduce, we want to ensure that we address a major issue that we discovered last week. We know that state, regional, and local officials were informed by the Clean Harbors Environmental Services that a company contracted by Norfolk Southern Railroad, an upwards of 700,000 gallons of water impacted by this February 3rd train derailment in East Palestine, Ohio, would be sent to the city, our facility at Back River Water, Wastewater Treatment Plant for additional treatment. I know I can speak for every member of the city council, every elected official here in the city of Baltimore, and more importantly, the citizens of Baltimore, when I say that this is simply unacceptable and yet another example of environmental injustice that has negatively impacted our cities for generations. I want to commend Mayor Scott and his team for the consistent communication that has been occurring since we were made aware of this matter, and while we cannot prevent the EPA from directing, directing this responsibility to be, to be handled by our own employees at the backwater facility, we can ensure that there is a process of transparency for the citizens of Baltimore. We will demand answers to the questions that we all have, such as how this water treatment will be processed, and what are the steps that will be taken to ensure that Baltimoreans and the people surrounding and our communities are not placed in harm's way. This is why we're calling for an emergency hearing on every member's desk. There's a memorandum from my office to provide information for this needed process and to ensure that we're all kept aware of why and how this is happening. There have already been too many concerns about the quality of water in Baltimore, and now, because we're essentially being forced to clean up everybody else's mess, we run the risk of further fanning the flames to fear around our water in our city. None of us want Baltimore to be a dumping ground for environmental hazards, but since this is happening, whether we like it or not, we need answers and information. That is what we will get to ensure that we can provide clear answers and transparencies to the citizens of Baltimore. I would like to thank in advance your patience for understanding as we deal with this matter, and I will advise everyone to refrain from passing along hearsay that could do more harm than good, but rather be intentional about waiting to hear official information from the federal government and from our state leaders when sharing with others. Doing so is safe and very responsible. This is a priority for all of us, and we promise to seek information, and that is needed again from a transparent perspective for our citizens. At this time, we will go into the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0368, Real Property Tax Credit for Energy Conservation Devices for the Purposes of Amending the Energy Conservation Devices Real Property Tax Credit and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors Bullock and Mosby on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will hand the sponsor of the bill. Would you like to speak on behalf of this? Councilman Bullock? Your floor is yours.
Yes, again, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council. As you know, we already passed the bill for the geothermal devices. This amendment simply makes it easier for the public to understand, and it creates a time horizon for the execution of the bill. So again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your leadership on this issue. This bill's been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0369, High Performance Inclusionary Housing Tax Credit for the Purpose of Establishing a High Performance Inclusionary Housing Tax Credit, Providing for the Eligibility Criteria of the Tax Credit, Establishing the Amount of the Tax Credit, Requiring a Certain Annual Report, Defining Certain Terms, and Generally Relating to the High Performance Inclusionary Housing Tax Credit. Sponsor Ramos.
The council would like to yield the floor to the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This legislation creates Baltimore's very first affordable housing tax credit. It is the High Performance Inclusionary Housing Tax Credit to help further our work for the Inclusionary Housing Bill we introduced last year. Our inclusionary housing legislation is designed to revamp the program that was completely unsuccessful in the past 15 years, only producing 34 inclusionary units. Currently, as amended, the Inclusionary Bill 22-0195 says that developments with 20 housing units or more and who get a major public subsidy have to provide 10% of their units to families earning 60% of area median income. If the city has additional subsidy to house residents of lower income, then the developer has to provide an additional 5% for families living below 50% of area median income. The report commissioned by the Department of Housing and Community Development from Enterprise Community Partners recommends a 15, 15% tax credit to cover the gap between the market rent and the rent that can be collected from the tenants with 60% of area median income. That is what this tax credit does for you today. The report further recommends that the policy and tax credit be narrowed to certain areas of the city, and the report calls them core markets, which are basically around the harbor area. This tax credit, as drafted in this legislation, is citywide, allowing for developments across the city to take advantage of this credit to provide inclusionary housing. Normally, the city council can't just create tax credits without authorization from the General Assembly. In this case, we are using the broad authority that the General Assembly gave us under the High Performance Buildings Code, in the, in the tax code, to incentivize development of high-performance buildings or green buildings. Currently, we have three high-performance tax credits: High Performance Market Rate Rental, High Performance, which is citywide, High Performance Targeted, and High Performance New Construction. Under the High Performance category, we now have, under this legislation introduced today, a High Performance Inclusionary Housing Tax Credit, which can be coupled with any other subsidy or tax credit. I look forward to the discussions about this credit and about our inclusionary law. I tend to think that our major developers can afford to provide 10% of their units as inclusionary units because they're already getting substantial subsidy. I introduce this tax credit today to further the discussion and ensure we are successful in providing units for families in areas that they would otherwise not be able to reach. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for your support.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. This bill will be assigned to committee as a whole. We're going to hear it together with the Inclusionary Housing Bill that you guys have been participating in. I see the hand raised of Councilman Bullock, Councilman Torrance, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Dorsey. Thank you. Again, this has been assigned to the committee as a whole. Madam Clerk, if we could now go into resolutions.
City Council Resolution 23-0161R, Informational Hearing Anti-Littering Campaign in Baltimore City for the Purpose of Inviting the Director of the Office of Sustainability, the Director of Public Works, and the Zero Waste Manager of the Department of Public Works to discuss the littering and dumping problem in Baltimore City, and to explore the creation of an anti-littering campaign or effort to encourage Baltimore's residents and visitors to be more mindful of how they dispose of their waste. Sponsor Conway.
At this time, by the way, we'd like to recognize Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, I think we can all appreciate that this is a really important issue that we experience significantly across our city, that being illegal dumping and littering. And I think it's important for us to appreciate and realize that even with perfect operations, which we don't have today, but even with perfect operations on litter cleanup and solid waste removal from dumping sites, ultimately, this issue is a hearts-and-minds campaign to change the way that people treat their neighborhoods, treat our city when they're visiting it and when they live in it. So looking forward to the conversation that we're able to have, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on this issue. This will be assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Are there any close monitors? I see the hand raised of Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Torrance, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock. Thank you again. This has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. At this time, we'd like to recognize Councilman from the First District.
Thanks, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption of Resolution 23-0162R.
Without objection, we will have the rule suspended for immediate adoption privileges, hearing and seeing none. Mr. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. The decision to send at least 20 train cars of contaminated water from East Palestine, Ohio to Baltimore by Norfolk Southern was reckless. Lackluster communication has left our communities in the dark. Today, we're calling on the Environmental Protection Agency to do their part and work with us to mitigate any and all harms. I want to thank the mayor, as you did, the Law Department, and our partners in state government, who are exploring every possible avenue to stop this toxic waste from coming into Back River. While we may not be able to stop Norfolk Southern from sending it to the Clean Harbor Facility, I appreciate the attempt to keep it out of our waterways until we have more transparency and oversight. If the plan goes through, and it could as soon as Thursday, contaminated water will be sent via train to the Clean Harbors Facility in South Baltimore, right near the Bresco Trash Incinerator. Westport, Mount Wynans, Cherry Hill, and other South Baltimore neighborhoods proximate to the Clean Harbors Facility have an air toxicity, cancer rate, air-toxic cancer rate risk in the 80th to 100th percentile nationally. These overburdened communities should not have to take on more toxic waste. After the waste is treated at Clean Harbors, it would be sent to the Back River Waste Facility. This is the same facility that has had ongoing challenges and a recent explosion not too long ago. The Chesapeake Bay is at a tipping point, and we cannot afford the risk of further contamination. We stand in solidarity with the people of East Palestine. Our city understands all too well the long-term costs of environmental injustice, but now is not the time, and Baltimore is not the place to clean up Norfolk Southern's mess. Too often, cities with the highest rates of concentrated poverty and environmental degradation are asked to shoulder the burden for the, for corporate malfeasance. East Palestine and Baltimore deserve better. Mr. President, I move the resolution to be adopted.
So we have a motion on the floor to move. It's been second. Before we vote, we have to take a roll call. Do we have a copy for everybody?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
It's on the members' desk. Everybody should have a copy on their desk?
Oh.
No?
Not. Let me, uh...
If it's not, we'll, we'll make sure we get copies.
I will pass it around right now. Apologies.
No, we, we need a copy on everybody's desk. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Should also be in the members' inbox. Should also be in the members' inboxes.
Councilmembers, in the future, just make sure we give copies to the pages. They'll make sure they're distributed and handed out accordingly. Thank you so much. So everyone, we have a motion that's been properly seconded. At this time, we're going to do a roll call for immediate adoption of this resolution.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. Thank you so much. Councilmember Cohen, you can find the consent calendar in Section A on the back of the agenda as there are motions to approve the consent calendar. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
President, thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objections, we'll be in short titles for duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we're in short titles for duration of the meeting. First up, we go to ECD. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0262 Landmark List Exteriors Baltimore City Engine Company Fourteen Firehouse.
The body would like to recognize the Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Economic and Community Development, the hearing had five, basically, landmark bills, the exterior, and I think the committee can agree with me that it was a very historical and educational experience with all of these bills. We had witnessed to the oldest firehouse in the city, the changes that are going to be taking place with the Harlem Theater, very historical landmark, and it's a lot of things going on in that building. We had an educational enlightenment of the Canton Railroad Transfer Bridge. And then there were two homes, a home in Roland Park and, of course, the popular Reed Callaway House. So it just shows the amazing history that we have in this city and just the excitement that we all are experiencing on the redevelopment. So moving forward, Bill Number 22-0262, this bill, and this was the Baltimore City Engine Company Fourteen Firehouse, the oldest in the city. This bill was heard on March 21st, 2021. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Vice President. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0263 Landmark List Exteriors Harlem Theater.
Madam Vice President.
Bill Number 22-0263, the exteriors of the Harlem Theater. This bill was heard on March 21st, 2023. I move the amendment.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendment is approved. Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0264 Landmark List Exteriors Canton Railroad Transfer Bridge.
Body would like to recognize Vice President Middleton.
This bill was also heard on March 21st, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Bill is approved. Will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0265 Landmark List Exteriors 3818 Roland Avenue.
Madam Vice President.
22-0265 was also heard on March 21st, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Bill is approved. Will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0277 Landmark List Reed Callaway House.
Madam Vice President.
Bill Number 22-0277 was also heard on March 21st, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. We'll now turn to bills on third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0204 Vacant Structures 311 Complaint Fines. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0214 Franchise Underground Snowmelt System. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0289 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 867 Highland Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0300 Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority Renewal through April 23rd, 2027. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now, we're going to turn to committee announcements. Committee chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with any announcements you might have. First up, we're going to go to ECD. Madam VP.
Thank you. On May 2nd, 2022, we will hear Bill Number 23-0359 at 2:05 PM, and it's rezoning 600 North Packer Street.
Thank you, Madam VP. Next, we're going to turn to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we're going to Health, Environment, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing for Resolution 22-0142R informational hearing, workday implementation status on Wednesday, April 12th, 2023, at 10:00 AM. That same day, at 10:01 AM, the committee will hold a hearing for the Resolution 22-0129R informational hearing, 311, requests for tenants facing chronic mode. The hearings will be held in the council chamber and also through WebEx.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we're going to Safety Government Operations, SGO. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill 22-0138R informational hearing on the coordination between the Police Commissioner, School Police Chief, and the Sheriff on Wednesday, April 12th, 2023, at 1:00 PM, right here as we speak, at the request of Councilmember Stokes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to Rules and Legislative Oversight.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill Number EA 23-0180 this Thursday, March 30th, at 5:05 PM for Raquel Marquez, member of the Commission for Women. We'll also hold a hearing on this Thursday, March 30th, at 5:10 for members of the Baltimore Hispanic Commission, EA 23-0181 Florde Maria Agusti, EA 23-0182 Kevin Griffin Moreno, EA 23-0183 Marley Cardona Maz, EA 23-0184 Juliana Valenka Banks, EA 23-0185 Lydia Walther Rodriguez. We'll also hold a hearing on this Thursday, March 30th, at 5:00 PM for John McCulty for the Board of Ethics. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, certainly last but not least, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, April 18th, at 10:00 AM. City Council Resolution 22-0124R informational hearing, residential rental licensing. The committee will also hold hearings on Tuesday, April 4th, starting at 10:00 AM. Council Bill 23-0331 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development, in the amount of $11 million. On Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:01 AM, Council Bill 23-0335 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, in the amount of $1.25 million. Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:02 AM, Council Bill 23-0336 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, in the amount of $1.75 million. Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:03 AM, Council Bill 23-0337 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, in the amount of $1 million. Tuesday, April 4th, 10:04 AM, Council Bill 23-0338 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, in the amount of $500,000. Tuesday, April 4th, 10:05 AM, Council Bill 23-0339 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, in the amount of $500,000. Tuesday, April 4th, 10:06 AM, Council Bill 23-0341 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of General Services, in the amount of $16.6 million. Tuesday, April 4th, 10:07 AM, Council Bill 23-0342 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of General Services, in the amount of $500,000. Tuesday, April 4th, 10:08 AM, Council Bill 23-0355 Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of General Services, in the amount of $660,000. Mr. President and colleagues, also on members' desks is the annual memo with the fiscal year 2024 budget hearing format and schedule. A couple of quick highlights, this is very similar to what you've seen in years past, especially last year. The fiscal year 2024 budget overview with BBMR and Baltimore City Public School System will be at 3:00 PM on Thursday, May 25th. At 6:00 PM that same day, we'll have Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night as a reminder. That is the public's opportunity to provide public testimony to the city council on the budget. This is separate from the Board of Estimates Taxpayers Night. And finally, on the second page, you will see the full agency detail schedule, starting on Tuesday, May 30th, at 9:00 AM, going through 10:00 PM each day through Tuesday, June 6th. Formal green slip announcements will be read at the next council meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We also have two additional announcements from the council committee as a whole on Monday, April 3rd, 2023, L0230036, City Council Legislative Oversight, Legislative Oversight on East Palestine Chemical Waste Water Disposal at Back River Waste Water Treatment Plant. Again, that's Monday, April 3rd, 2023, at 5:45 PM. The next committee as a whole announcement will be on L0230152R. On Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 12:00, we'll hear that Resolution 23-0152R. It's an informational hearing on the executive leadership vacancies here in the city of Baltimore. Again, that's Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 12:00 PM. With that, that concludes all of our committee announcements. At this time, we're going to turn the floor over for regular announcements. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a moment of silence to Donna Casell, the mother of Sam Casell, who is assistant coach here with the Philadelphia 76ers. Thank you.
Thank you. The body would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. A moment of silence, two moments of silence. First, my very best cousin's son died in his sleep in Puerto Rico last week, so we hope to get your prayers and please pray for our family. Also, wanted to recognize a moment of silence for Diana Gibson. She was the wife of Dr. Larry Gibson. Many of us knew her well. She died suddenly on March 15th. She was a teacher for many years before also working for Mayor and then Governor Schaefer, as well as, most recently, still working in her 80s at Congressman FuMe's office. And as Governor Moore said during the funeral this weekend, "Dr. Gibson was the builder, but Diana Gibson was the architect." You had to get through Diana first before we could get to Dr. Gibson. So we will miss her greatly in our district, and also, she's made such an impact on so many lives in our city, we will miss her greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional announcements? Hearing none, we also would like to lift up the family of Mr. Curtis Dean Green. He's the uncle, beloved uncle, of Councilmember Glover. His services are on the 30th and viewing on the 29th. We also have the passing of... Go ahead, you can go ahead. Costello, while I get the next name.
I wanted to ask for a moment of silence for Ernest Ernie Bud Hall. Ernie was a local boxer who was tragically lost his life last week, also owned a gym in Mount Vernon and was nothing short of a pillar in the community in working with young people in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that. Chairman Costello, we also would like to lift up the brother-in-law to our amazing Vice President, Mr. Eugene Middleton. His services are with the Wake on the 31st and Saturday, the 1st will be the actual services. So as we please lift up the family, the Middleton family, and our amazing Vice President. And then, we all know that we lost an amazing pillar in the church community, that's Reverend A.C. D. Vaughn. His services are also at the end of this week as well. Reverend A.C. D. Vaughn is the foundation of many churches and many clergies and congregations throughout the city of Baltimore. So it's a huge loss. He leaves a tremendous legacy. I'm pretty sure he's impacted many lives, not just in his room, but more importantly, throughout the city of Baltimore. With that, are there any additional announcements? That being, there is one additional announcement that I would like to lift up, our beloved brothers and sisters in Nashville. We all know the tragedy that occurred at an elementary school. Pretty horrific details. No one expects to send their child to school to have to face what those young folks down in Nashville face today. This is a crisis that's crippling our communities, our families, our country, in relation to gun violence. But when that gun violence is turned towards precious, innocent young folks with tremendous futures and a life ahead of them, and their lives are taken in that way, it does sting a little differently. So in the moment of silence, if we could please lift up the community of Nashville. With that, we're going to turn it over to you, Madam Vice President.
The next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, April 3rd, 2023, at 5:00 PM. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now forty-seven victims of homicide this year, the more than 1,965 Baltimoreans who have died from COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic, and also Thomas Bailey, Diane Gibson, Luis A. Gonzalez Conrad, Don Casell, Curtis Dean Green, Ernest Bud Hall, which happens to be cousin of the Middleton family, the Partlow and Lieber families. And just also mentioning quickly Eugene Middleton, a couple of years older than my husband, his brother, and he set a few marks in life as well. He was one of the first African-Americans to stay on campus at the University of Maryland College Park, some 60s era, early 60s, and also was a member of the DC Black Panther Party, because you know, in those days, that was a strong organization that helped to move... move the agenda of African-Americans. So I think I mentioned all of the... Did I mention Diane Gibson? I included her. Thank you.
A.C. D. Vaughn. And Reverend A.C. D. Vaughn.
And Reverend A.C. Vaughn. A very prestigious reverend. In fact, he was so important that I think I'll mention this. He was the first, when I decided I wanted to take on this task and run for office for city council, he was the very first person that I had to go to and get approval from for this task.
Thank you for that moment of silence. There is one additional item I would like to lift up before we conclude. I received a message from the mayor's office. I just want to read it out just to make sure we all... Actually, from the mayor himself, that they're modifying the permit to say that we can't discharge at Back River. So we talked about it over lunch. You know, one of the key things we're asking is, what are we going to do once the water is treated? Are we going to send it back, send it somewhere else? Do they expect us to discharge it? The mayor is trying to develop a MOU with the company to say that we will not discharge it in the Back River. So that is, again, the city working aggressively to ensure that we get ahead of this, and this is your council being as transparent as possible. With that said, we'd like to thank everyone for joining us today. There's no new business before the desk. This will conclude the fifty-third meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council.